I'm sorry, I missed that. What was that?
Do we have quorum?
Um, I'm not sure.
Okay, I'll look.
I'll do a quick inventory.
Looks like we need a couple more people, so we can wait another couple minutes.
Can we remind people that aren't talking to mute?
Yes, we can. It sounds like I'm hearing someone chew their breakfast.
Well, I thought it was someone's heartbeat, and I was worried because there was missing a couple beats.
That would be bad.
I think that was Pamela Titan.
All right, looks like we're going to be down a couple members today. So let's get started. Wayman, do you want to read the electronic guidance?
Yes, I will. Pursuant to Governor Whitmer's executive order 2020-154, the Kent County Board of Commissioners, in order to protect the public health of Kent County, will conduct this meeting via electronic communications today. Any member of the public wishing to listen to the proceedings or provide public comment may do so by using the following internet connection or phone numbers or pass codes, which are listed on the agenda that's posted on the screen. Anyone disrupting the meeting today by using offensive language or actions will be muted or removed from the meeting. You may send public comment via email to publiccomment@kentcountymi.gov.
All right, thank you, Wayman. Again, we're going to call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Commissioners Bonk.
Here.
Antor. Commissioner Antor. Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Here.
Planstein.
Here.
Voorhees. Commissioner Voorhees. Commissioners Coleman.
Here.
Breevy.
Here.
Teal.
Here.
Sparks.
Present.
Melton.
Present.
Hennessy.
Here.
Callan.
Here.
Bolkowski. Commissioner Bolkowski. One more time, Commissioner Bolkowski.
Madam Clerk, I think Commissioner Bolkowski and Hennessy were going to be absent today, but just, we'll call them just to double check.
Yes, because I do have Hennessy present.
Okay.
Womack.
Here.
Woodin.
Here.
Skaggs. Commissioner Skaggs. Chair Bolter.
Here, and it looks like Tom Antor is on now, and I've seen something in chat.
Yes, I'll go back. For roll calls, I'll go back to those missed. So Commissioners Antor.
Here.
Commissioner Voorhees. Commissioner Bolkowski. Commissioner Skaggs. Madam Chair, you have, let me see, Madam Chair, you have 16 members present and three absent. You do have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to item three invocation. I'll call Commissioner Womack today for our invocation.
Yes, I would like to do the invocation here today, September 24th, 2020. I will start off with sending my condolences to the family of Breonna Taylor, who was born and raised here in Grand Rapids, Michigan. An untimely death has led to protests across the United States of America yesterday. So I would definitely like to send my condolences out to that family. And as we look for a change in America when it comes to social justice, I will start my invocation with a short poem before we go into the pledge allegiance about some other issues we as Americans are facing here in the United States today. "The roads are empty, the crowds are so small, and barely a trace of life outside at all. Every human is locked up in their house, and the sunny playground now looks bleak all about. Why does our whole world look like a desolate island now? What a silly question, but even a toddler can answer that now, because there's a monster out there I've heard tell that can even make the lungs we use for breathing swell. It is tinier than ourselves, but it is causing a huge pandemic. If it enters your body, it will wreak havoc. Coughs or sneezes are like its own private jet, and to our lungs, it's a constant threat. We who always chat and dine in groups now prefer to stay away, and with a mask on our face, we sit at home and stare straight away. Nobody's going to school anymore. I don't see children playing in the dark. There's no difference between the day, the light, and the dark. Nobody even wants to open the door anymore, except for their own homes or the grocery store. We used to giggle and play. I thought we would never see this day. We grew up on our swings and slides. Now we're caged in our homes inside with the coronavirus gumbo lurking outside. Always pity the toy elves trapped on their shells. Now, I really know why, as to me, it's a privilege to even go outside and swallow a glass of sunlight these days. We who are social animals now dread the doorbell. Sadly, we are told to see and even unveil every visitor or friend as an unwelcome virus. When can we really truly be free? When without a mask can we stick our heads outside? When will the dawn arrive? When can we say once again, we are on our way? Together, my fellow Americans, let us await that day." That is a poem by a teenager in the United States of America capturing the pandemic. Please join me in saying the pledge allegiance, fellow commissioners. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty. Thank you, Commissioner Womack, for those words.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're on to item five, Special Order of Business, and I will call on Dale Robertson to give us an update on the museum.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the commission, it's my name is Dale Robertson. I serve as President of the Grand Rapids Public Museum. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today. I'd like just to begin to acknowledge all that is before you and express my appreciation as a citizen, but also as a member of the organization here for your leadership right here, right now, in these times. In addition to the regular business of the county, there is much before you. And so I appreciate again also your engagement and diligence. And so today, I'll do my best in the short time that I have to share some things about the public museum and how I believe it's continuing to fulfill its mission. And I do that fully, mindfully, or in knowing the context of everything else that's going on here before you and the issues that you have. So with that, Madam Chair, I think I'd like to just to proceed and just share a few things. I'd like to begin, though, by recognizing Commissioner Emily Breevy. She is your appointee on our Board of Trustees. Emily, Commissioner Breevy also serves on the Audit Committee. And from that perch, she sees the whole organization. So she's keeping a good eye on us for all of you, and we very much appreciate her being here. She's a good member of the Board of Trustees, and so we thank you for her appointment. Some of you have heard this before, but I don't, you know, it's always helpful to share a little bit of context and history and background. And you've also may have heard me say, you know, I'm not a West Michigan guy. I'm a Down River Detroit guy, so I have none of the West Michigan humility. I'm going to share a couple of things that I think really goes to civic pride, right? Oldest museum in the state of Michigan. Second-largest museum in the state of Michigan in terms of size of its collections. And here is one of the very most unique things. Ninety-eight percent of the 250,000 artifacts and specimens donated, donated by the people of West Michigan over 166 years. That makes us unique amongst museums, really, anywhere. So with that, of course, we are in a different world, right? I usually report to you how our attendance has gone up. When I started this job in 2008, we had 68,000 people that came through our doors. The previous fiscal year, we had 259,000, right? But then things changed, and so we have trended down, obviously, because of being closed for COVID. We opened up in July, and so as a comparison, in July and August, we had 11,000-ish, almost 12,000 people that visited the museum. That was versus 38,000 the same two months the year prior. We are trending up, however, and we've had some really good weekends, and weekdays are beginning to trend up, but we are still staying below what the governor's orders are in terms of total number of people in the buildings. We began a process a few years ago now to begin to put collections online and then also to categorize collections into one of three tiers, the tier three being those that people could actually hold and handle and touch. And at this point, we have 8,300 of what we call tier-three collections. And that'll be important in a minute when I circle back around to some of the educational programming. Our online presence, it's actually been pretty interesting during COVID. Our Instagram views were actually increased, and I think that was a large part due to putting a lot of programming online for families. And so we still stayed connected out into the social media. All of our summer camps this year were virtual. We had 200 participants in that. But that also led us then into something we called the Museum at Home, which was the creation of a lot of virtual programming that we put out online for free. And that was for families and teachers to be able to access. Part of that is because of the success of that, both DA Blodgett and Helen DeVos Children's Hospital has taken some of those virtual programmings and then infused them into their own system and made them available to their own clients. In fact, now we're even working with the children's hospital for their own internal TV station to create programming for patients inside the hospital. So I think I'd like to, just in the short time that I have left, is talk a little bit about that educational programming and then try to weave in a little bit of a story here that try to make the... You know, I'm trained as a lawyer, so I want to make the case that we are connecting with folks and fulfilling that mission and the promise that came through the millage. So the educational staff here has been creating resources that include lesson plans and then utilizing what is called primary sources, which are the artifacts. In this case, because we have so many now online, right? And with photos and so forth, that families and teachers can access those and do it and see it up close. And then with the lesson plans, can work through an entire process. And it's proving to be so popular, right? That not only do we have Kent County teachers that are downloading it, we have a group of teachers from New York, because it's out online and it's free, that are pulling in these resources. So it does utilize skills to search the database, do research, make connections between various disciplines, and say is proving to be very, very popular and used, which is exactly what we want. Another piece maybe that I'd like to share out is during one of the summer camps, it was on photography. And it's amazing what you can photograph with, you know, just one of these, right? But what was particularly noteworthy to me is that the assignment was is that, and they were kids, right, kids throughout Kent County, that in their photograph had to decide what story, what message that they wanted to share. And it is amazing the composition, because that takes thought. That takes thought, forethought, planning. How are you going to convey this? And so some of those photos are up and out on the internet and just the talent. And maybe it's because I'm getting older in my life, but I'm just blown away by the talent and the sophistication of these photographs. Another piece of just having things available online and resources and still being accessible. We had a teacher that was planning a lesson, said, "Do you happen to have, I want to do something on African masks. Do you have them?" Well, yes, we do. From our ethnographic collections, they are online also. You can search them, and these are some of the most beautiful things that I have ever seen. And, you know, objects tell a story, and it makes a connection. And it's these visceral types of experience that create those stronger hooks for future information, which is why teachers are reaching out for us. And the point of telling that story is that the depth and breadth of what we have, because of those 166 years of people donating, is remarkable. The last thing that I'll end on is we had this curator battle. And now, actually, we're going to have a curator battle. It was so good. We're going to have one between us and the Meyer Gardens and one between us and the zoo, right? And so we did it online, right, the first one. It was just between us, and they answered various questions and so forth. And they all have to say why whatever object they pick is better than the others, right? And so one of them, we have a recent, very recent new member who's a geologist and paleontologist, so he's been getting in that natural history collection. And he featured in one of the questions, an artifact, a specimen, actually, that we'd gotten from someone named Emma Cole. She'd given a lot. Most of them are on loan to U of M. That's how good they are, right? But we've got about a dozen of these samples. So, and he's talking about the significance of it. But here's the learning for me, even, right, coming out of this. Emma Cole, Emma Cole was a teacher in Grand Rapids Public Schools. This is like in 1900, and she was a scientist. And she wrote a textbook that is still referenced today, right? And she was one of the few women scientists in the nation at that time. So right here in our own Kent County. So the lesson, part of the lesson to me here is, you know, and think about, she did this before any internet, right? For any of this to become nationally known at their time, it's a lesson is, you know, do you have to be in New York or some big city and somewhere across the world to impact the world? No, no. So any of us can aspire to whatever height that we want to go. And I point to Emma Cole as another example of somebody coming out from Grand Rapids that impacted and changed the world. We're going to be hearing more about Emma Cole as we dig deeper into this and present more programs in the future. I think it's just an absolutely amazing story, and there's always continuing things for us to learn, myself included, working in this job. So I think, in summary, we continue to strive to serve students and teachers and the public virtually, as well as being open to the public and welcoming folks back. We have an exhibit called Under the Arctic that opens this weekend. We have a Legos exhibit that opens in November. And of course, supplement it all with lesson plans and learnings and even artifacts out of our own collections. So with that, Madam Chair, I thank you. I'll stop. I hope I kept within the... Happy to answer any questions if I have the time.
You did awesome. Thank you so much. And my guess is with 166 years of history, you could probably keep us here for several hours, and we would be still captivated. But unfortunately, we have other county business. So really appreciate all you're doing. I know as a mom of two kids in school, any online learning is helpful. Anything, any way we can bring the museum into our homes is amazing. So thank you for all that work. Just so appreciate your work and the staff's work at the museum. And with that, it looks like Commissioner Breevy has a comment.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm honored to serve on the board. It's definitely a great group of people that are very passionate about, you know, collecting the stories of our community and presenting awesome information. One of the things I was really impressed with is the way that the staff transitioned during COVID from, you know, being, you know, an in-person facility, then, you know, to having collections available online and, you know, different opportunities to learn and grow and teach kids. But one of the things that I don't think Dale mentioned is the, you know, collections department is collecting stories, and they're trying to document what life is like during COVID-19. So hopefully, you know, years down the road, we can look back and see kind of how Grand Rapids, Kent County, thrived during this time and really came together and conquered the virus. But I'm really curious, you know, if there's any interesting stories that you can share from that, Dale, or, you know, findings, if you have anything at hand.
So, yes, thank you, if I may, Madam Chair. Yeah, so we've got about 375 submissions from the community, written stories, some videos, of course, objects, too, that people have contributed. Some of the videos are just phenomenal. And so, you know, we're finding is an increasing part of our archives and collections now are digital, as well you would expect, I suppose, in these times. So that's actually been very, very gratifying. And what's been particularly gratifying is, you know, so it's something to look at maybe, you know, a year or two. But also, people are going to be very curious, 50, you know, 75, 100 years. So it's, this contemporary collecting is really important. And so I'm very glad for the communities, you know, 375 is a lot, because it takes time, right, to put together something and to submit it. So that's been very, very gratifying. You know, we're also, we're in the process of collecting at least three of the murals from downtown, too. So we want to make sure that we're capturing those, that moment also. So that is another good point, I think, Commissioner Breevy, because the contemporary collecting is something that we had not been doing and have recently embraced. Make sure that we're telling these current stories.
That's so awesome you're doing that. I've told my boys several times, like, you're going to tell your kids about this someday. Save a mask. You're going to show them this mask someday. Commissioner Stuck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Good morning, Dale, and thank you for your report. Also want to thank you for, and everyone involved at the museum, for continuing to make our public museum really one of our relevant institutions in our community. And I know that that's not always easy to do for a museum, but you have certainly succeeded in doing that. My question is, when, as I recall, when we move forward with the Dedicated Millage, one of the financial assumptions or plans for long-term sustainability involve not just the contribution of the public funding through the Dedicated Millage, but also the other two legs, which is receipts through the actual sale of admissions and then contributions from those that have special interest in supporting. Given the developments through COVID, can you just talk a little bit about how those other legs of support have been impacted?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner, if I may, Madam Chair. So admissions really drives everything, and so those are down. And running at, say, I think I mentioned, 30% of normal. The American Alliance of Museums had suggested museums to budget at 75% to 80% of normal traffic. We thought that was high. We budgeted at around 50%. So we're trending below what our budget, what we budgeted. We'll keep an eye on it, of course, with things trending up in these two exhibits opening. By the end of December, we'll know whether we're going to have to go back in and then readjust our budget for the rest of the year. We are, our donations are trending below what would normally happen at this point, but that is entirely understandable, given many other needs out in the community. And so the millage has been critical for us to be able to be open. And as Commissioner Breevy had mentioned, I think the staff did a phenomenal job of transitioning quickly to put things online then for learning to continue at home. And that was one of those that I would argue, and you know, in the lawyer phrase, but for the millage, that would not have been able to have happened, right? And so we were out early, and we were out early with some really good programming, and that's really because we've got certified teachers and tied all of those programs directly to curriculum that the schools were and the kids had to keep up on. So that was critical. We're doing well enough to be open five days a week and are holding our own, but it's, you know, we got to watch it every day.
Well, thank you, and I know that nothing fair about COVID, and it's forced all of us to go through some changes. But I appreciate your reaction, response, and us do that. Hopefully, we can get back to our normal formula for sustainability. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, concerns for Dale today? I don't see any other hands. Must mean you're doing an awesome job, and we all love the museum, and thank you so much for everything you do. And again, I want to again reiterate, parents trying to find, you know, educational tools, it is so critical. I did sit on one classroom, and it was painful. So I really appreciate anything interesting that you can share with the kids at Kent County. We really appreciate it. So thankful for all you do, and thank you so much for taking the time today.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much for having me.
Thanks, Dale. See you soon. All right, we are on to item six of our agenda, public comment related to our agenda. I will look to see if we have any hands. Pam, do we have anyone in the email inbox?
No, we don't. Not at the moment.
Okay. I don't see any hands up. If we're scrolling. All right, we will move on to consent agenda, and I'll call Commissioner Womack. You might be muted. Commissioner Womack?
Okay, I'm unmuted now.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I moved to adopt the consent agenda here on 9/24/2020.
Support by Breevy?
Moved by Commissioner Womack. Support by Commissioner Breevy. Questions or comments on the consent agenda? No hands, no comments. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Bonk.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Voorhees. Commissioners Coleman?
Yes.
Breevy?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolkowski. Commissioners Womack?
Yes.
Wooden?
Yes.
Skaggs?
Yes.
Chair Bolter?
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 17 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're on to item eight on our agenda, resolutions. We have quite a few today. I will call on Commissioner Steck for our first.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move approval of the Resolution 9/24/2092, which comes from the COVID Cares Allocation Subcommittee for allocation of approximately $7.8 million of the CARES funds to various purposes.
Moved by Commissioner Steck, support by Commissioner?
Support by Breevy.
Breevy, questions or comments on this resolution? Questions, comments, concerns? I'm not seeing any.
I have a question.
Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair. My, I had two clarifying questions. One, the funding that has been called out from an unallocated reserve to another line item, just confirming since several of these line items are entities that received a previous appropriation, the kind of bulk COVID Subcommittee report. Does that mean that though, these line items are each getting an increase? The $5 million from unallocated to business, the million from unallocated reserve to the mitigation of homeless? Is that increasing each of their totals? Or is that just because those dollars haven't been spent yet? They've been technically designated as undesignated reserve?
Wait a minute, Linda, do you want to take that? It's my understanding it's, they're in addition to?
That is correct, Chair. They are in addition to the previous allocation.
Thank you for the clarification. And then lastly, the $750,000 from childcare needs allocation to business assistance, but specifically to assist childcare providers. My question was, with the remaining $550,000, at least what I saw in the COVID report, is that, is that still set aside for childcare purposes? And is that to provide essentially vouchers for those who need affordable childcare and don't have a caregiver who can stay at home with them? Is that, how is that being programmed? And also, was this reduction determined necessary because there were fewer people seeking this assistance, but more childcare providers needing COVID-safe material? Forgive me, I wasn't able to watch the entire recording of the, of the COVID Subcommittee. So just a little more background on how that decision was made would be helpful.
Linda, I don't believe there's any reduction in this line, but Linda, do you want to take the lead on that?
Commissioner, the, the reason for this is that the daycare providers need the assistance and we have the program to accept those applications from the small, the small businesses all set up. So this was an efficient way of getting the money to the daycare providers as opposed to setting up an entirely different program with the time and effort that that would take.
Gotcha. So the entirety of the funds that were set aside for childcare is now being moved here? It's not necessarily part of it's being moved into Chamber and then the remainder is being left in the other line item? I just, sorry, go ahead.
There, there is money in, in the childcare line that's going through First Steps Kent for additional programming. So none of the original allocation for childcare is being diverted to any other use. It's just a way of getting it out to the community as fast and as efficiently as we can.
Perfect. Thank you for the clarification again. Apologies, I wasn't able to watch the entire recordings of the committee. So just getting caught up to speed on that decision was helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on Resolution 92? Don't see any other hands. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 9/24/2092, Commissioners Bonk? Commissioner Bonk? I'll come back. Commissioners Antor?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck?
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein?
Yes.
Voorhees. Commissioner Voorhees. Commissioners Coleman?
Yes.
Breevy?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioners Talon?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolkowski. Commissioners Womack?
Yes.
Wooden?
Yes.
Skaggs?
Yes.
Bolter?
Yes.
And Commissioner Vonk, are you?
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 17 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 9/24/2092 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to Resolution 8B of the agenda and I'll call Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move for adoption of Resolution 9/24/2093 from the Health Department. It's the addition of 1.6 FTE Specialist Position who will assist in the department's COVID response to Kent County's migrant population.
Moved by Commissioner Talon, support by Commissioner? Spark, was it Sparks? Sorry. Commissioner Sparks, questions or comments on this Resolution 93? Give everybody a minute. Not seeing anyone. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 9/24/2093, Commissioners?
Yes.
Commissioner Antor? I'll come back?
Yes.
Okay. Got you. Commissioners Morgan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck?
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein?
Yes.
Voorhees. Commissioner Voorhees. Commissioners Coleman?
Yes.
Breevy?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Spark?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Talon?
Yes.
Bolkowski? Commissioner Bolkowski. Commissioners Womack?
Yes.
Wooden?
Yes.
Skaggs?
Yes.
Chair Bolter?
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 17 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 9/24/2093 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to 8C and I'll call Commissioner Vonk.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'll move that resolution as one full-time community service assistant position. Kent County Community Action.
Moved by Commissioner Vonk, support by Commissioner?
Melton supports.
Melton, questions or comments on Resolution 94? No hands. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 9/24/2094, Commissioners Vonk?
Yes.
Antor?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck?
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein?
Yes.
Voorhees. Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioners Breevy?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Talon?
Yes.
Bolkowski? Commissioner Bolkowski? Commissioners Womack?
Yes.
Wooden?
Yes.
Commissioner Skaggs?
Yes.
Chair Bolter?
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 17 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 9/24/2094 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to Resolution 8D of the agenda and I'll call Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move, just a second, trying to find on my screen here, Resolution 95, 9/24/20 of the Corona Relief Fund Migrant Seasonal Farmworker Grant for Kent County Community Action. Thank you.
Support by?
Moved by Commissioner Sparks, support by Commissioner Ponstein. Questions or comments on Resolution 95? Don't see any. Double checking. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Madam Chair, on the motion to adopt Resolution 9/24/2095, Commissioners Vonk?
Yes.
Antor?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck?
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein?
Yes.
Voorhees. Commissioner Voorhees. Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Breevy?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Talon?
Yes.
Bolkowski? Commissioner Bolkowski? Commissioners Womack?
Yes.
Wooden?
Yes.
Skaggs?
Yes.
Chair Bolter?
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 17 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 9/24/2095 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to Resolution 8E of our agenda and I'll call Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move Resolution 96 of today's date, the Quarantine Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Kit Assistance Grant from Kent County Community Action.
Moved by Commissioner Breevy, support by Commissioner?
Support by Melton.
Melton, questions or comments on Resolution 96? Don't see any hands. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt 9/24/2096, Commissioners Vonk?
Yes.
Antor?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck?
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein?
Yes.
Voorhees. Commissioner Voorhees. Commissioners Coleman?
Yes.
Breevy?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Talon?
Yes.
Bolkowski? Commissioner Bolkowski? Commissioners Womack?
Yes.
Wooden?
Yes.
Skaggs?
Yes.
Chair Bolter?
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 17 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 9/24/2096 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to Resolution 8, or Agenda Item AF, and I will call Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 9/24/2097, the Coronavirus Relief Fund Water and Plumbing Repair Assistance Grant from the Kent County Community Action.
Moved by Commissioner Sparks, support by Commissioner?
Ponstein.
Ponstein, questions or comments on Resolution 97? Don't see any hands. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 9/24/2097, Commissioners Vonk?
Yes.
Antor?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck?
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein?
Yes.
Voorhees? Commissioner Voorhees. Commissioners Coleman?
Yes.
Breevy?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Talon?
Yes.
Bolkowski? Commissioner Bolkowski? Commissioners Womack?
Yes.
Wooden?
Yes.
Skaggs?
Yes.
Chair Bolter?
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 17 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 9/24/2097 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are now on to Agenda Item 8G and I will call on Commissioner Steck since Commissioner Voorhees is absent today.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move approval of Resolution 9/24/2098 with respect to the acceptance and application of a grant from MDHHS, 1.342 million.
Moved by Commissioner Steck, support by Commissioner?
Sparks.
Sparks, questions or comments on Resolution 98? I don't see any hands raised. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 9/24/2098, Commissioners Vonk?
Yes.
Antor?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck?
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein?
Yes.
Voorhees? Commissioner Voorhees? Commissioners Coleman?
Yes.
Breevy?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Talon?
Yes.
Bolkowski? Commissioners Bolkowski? Commissioner Womack? Commissioner Womack?
Yes.
Commissioners Wooden?
Yes.
Skaggs?
Yep.
Chair Bolter?
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 17 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 9/24/2098 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to 8H and I will again call on Commissioner Steck.[1694.53]
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move approval of resolution nine twenty-four twenty ninety-nine, which calls for the appropriation of two point two million uh, to the twenty twenty CIP fund budget from the Sheriff's twenty twenty General Fund Budget to allow for the acquisition of body cams, dash cams, and lasers, and supporting a contract for the Sheriff's Department.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Steck, support by, was it Commissioner Jones?
It was.
Questions or comments on resolution ninety-nine? Don't see any hands raised. Commissioner Breeby.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, give my support for this. I think, you know, it's a great thing, uh, providing transparency for both, um, citizens and also our Sheriff's Department. So, um, definitely support this and looking forward to the rest of the board's putting in.
Any other questions or comments on Commissioner Womack?
Yes, I'd also like to, uh, join Commissioner Breeby in celebrating resolution ninety-nine at today's date with body cameras for our Sheriff's Department. I think is great. I think that, um, all the work that I've seen coming out the Sheriff's Department, when there's so much going on with law enforcement and communities across the United States, I think the Kent County Sheriff's Department has been a prime example on how community, uh, relations can be great between law enforcement and communities. Uh, Sheriff has been very proactive and the whole Sheriff's Department, very proactive on a lot of things that community, uh, members might want. So, very seldom get a chance to get law enforcement, all the kudos they deserve as they risk their life for us every day. But I just want to take this moment to do that for our Kent County Sheriff's Department. Thank you, Chair.
Looks like Commissioner Steck and then Skaggs has a comment.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to underscore that, uh, you know, I believe that the, the current state of the analysis of body cams and dash cams suggests that they do add a significant degree of transparency, accountability, and, um, and confidence, uh, that the public has in the overall law enforcement communities activities. It certainly adds to the capacity to, uh, to assure some resolution of concerns, uh, from the community to these activities. I believe it also enhances some of the civility and compliance, uh, in the engagements with the public. And so, uh, it, it does have the advantages of enhancing and assisting the law enforcement. Certainly, its capacity to do that is dependent upon solid policies by our sheriff and the, uh, policing agency, and have all the confidence in the world that she's capable and will do that, um, and, uh, that this will be a positive impact on law enforcement.
Mr. Skaggs.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just wanna, um, A, uh, I just wanna echo what Commissioner Steck said. I think it's important that we have these, uh, that we have this equipment and these tools, um, but that the policies that, uh, that the sheriff has implemented and will implement it, and use them to the, to the best ability to encourage de-escalation of technique. And then obviously, that was the reason for moving, um, across law enforcement to tasers was that it was not needful force to, uh, so I hope that, um, that we're looking at various de-escalation techniques. Uh, my one question, if the sheriff is on, um, and I apologize for my check and see if she was. Um, but these, these body cameras are always on, uh, throughout the shift, or are they turned on and off by the officer?
Sheriff, are you there?
I am. Uh, so there are mandatory triggers that the officer would turn the camera on specifically when they're gonna have, uh, public contact. So if they're riding around in a car, they're not gonna be on at that point, but they are augmented by, uh, the in-car video system. And there are a number of automatic triggers that would key up either one of the camera's systems depending on what the contact nature is. For example, when somebody pulls a taser, it will automatically, uh, trigger the body cam if it's not already on because the officer triggered it. Um, it also provides audio for the in-car system, so they really work really well together. And as long as I'm on, uh, I will also share that, um, we do expect full implementation by January. We, uh, have a pilot, um, install that's already in place right now, which has helped us work out many of the policies. And so with this approval, we'll go forward with the final order, and, um, we expect a pretty quick resolution to that. And I've also learned as of yesterday that, um, several other departments are in the county are in the middle of implementing this very same system. So these systems can work in coordination with each other when we're on the same call. So that will be very helpful for the community as a whole.
Any follow-up, Commissioner Skaggs?
Oh, great. Thank you, Sheriff, uh, and thank you, Chair.
Yep, Commissioner Hennessy.
Following up on Commissioner Skaggs' comment, um, I'm really appreciative that we've got these body cameras. They'll help to, you know, in any ca- case of any disputes, you'll have something there as an evidence. And I appreciate that I've been working with the sheriff on formalizing our procedures in case there is an incident where a, a member of the public, a citizen, um, wants to, um, register a complaint or to further examine, um, things that have gone on. And, and I appreciate the work that we're doing to get, you know, that she's doing to, um, formalize these complaint procedures.
Any other questions or comments today regarding resolution ninety-nine? Don't see any other hands. I want to echo everyone's comments. Just want to say that, uh, so excited that this community is gonna have transparency in our public safety. Really want to give kudos to our sheriff for pulling this together quickly. Our staff for pulling the funding together quickly. Um, and I really appreciate the board's support. So with that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution nine twenty-four twenty ninety-nine, Commissioners Vonck.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees. Commissioner Voorhees. Commissioners Coleman.
Yes.
Breeby.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Tallin.
Yes.
Wolkowski. Commissioner Wolkowski. Commissioners Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have seventeen yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution nine twenty-four twenty niner niner is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to our last resolution of the day, and I will call on Commissioner Breeby.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move resolution one hundred of today's date, the two thousand nineteen State Homeland Security Grant and Budget Amendment from the Sheriff's Department.
Moved by Commissioner Breeby, support by Commissioner-
Melton supports.
Melton, questions or comments on resolution one hundred? We don't see any hands. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the-
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution nine twenty-four twenty one hundred, Commissioners Vonck.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
How about Morgan?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Morgan.
Yeah, I'll-
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees. Commissioner Voorhees. Commissioners Coleman.
Yes.
Breeby.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Tallin.
Yes.
Wolkowski. Commissioner Wolkowski. Commissioners Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have seventeen yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution nine twenty-four twenty one hundred is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to public comment related to general county matters. I will ask the staff to check the public comment email inbox and see if we have any public today raising their virtual hands, uh, to address us this morning.
Thank you. I don't see anything in our, um, public comment email box, and I don't currently see any hands raised in our participants list.
Okay, Natasha, thank you. Uh, Pam did mention someone was here earlier. Just want to be sure that we're-
Oh, sure.
Checking that, um-
Yeah, Madam Chair, there is a message in the inbox from Laura St. Louis. Um, she's a representative with Disability Advocates.
Okay.
She is a member of the Concerned Citizens for Improved Transportation and the Rapids Consumer Ed Advisory Committee. She just wanted to take a moment to introduce herself and say hi. I believe she's on the call.
Laura, are you on the call?
Yes, I am.
Welcome today.
Thank you.
To address the board.
I'm sorry?
Ple- please, please address the board.
I apologize. Uh, again, I just wanted to say hi and introduce myself. I do work with one of your commissioners, Dave Wolkowski. And, um, I haven't taken the step of actually saying hi to myself. So hello, and thank you for having me here today.
Thank you so much for sitting through our board meeting. We appreciate that. Um, we welcome you and, uh, happy that you can work with one of our commissioners, our beloved Commissioner Wolkowski. So thank you. Um, thanks so much for your comments. Do we have any other public comments today? Looks like someone- Ally? There, uh-
It's, uh, it's Ali.
Ali, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's no problem.
Welcome.
Thank you. Um, I'm not really too sure. This is the first time I've seen, uh, a meeting, um, so I guess, uh, I'm not too aware if there's any protocol with this, but, um, I, I mostly wanted to, uh, bring up that, some concerns that I had been noticing from a personal, um, dealings with the, with the, uh, judicial court. And, uh, and the judicial court in the, in the count, the county clerk's office. And there's, uh, I guess there's been, I, I feel like uh, some, some push to not, or to hide the video feeds for that, for the court hearings. And, uh, it's been very difficult to, to acquire, um, a transcript and/or, uh, the recording for. So I just wanted to bring that up. Um, I don't know if it's a concern for other cases. It could just be a, you know, uh, particular to me, but, but yeah, that's all I wanted to bring up today.
Okay, well, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Thank you for, uh, joining our board meeting today. We really appreciate your public input, and it's very important to us. So thank you so much for your participation today.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment today? Don't see any other hands raised. Any other emails? Anyone else joining by phone? Any, any other emails in the inbox before we proceed? Natasha or Pam?
I am looking here real quick, and I don't believe there are any other messages in there.
Okay. Great. We'll move on to item ten of our agenda, Commissioner Reports. Who has an official report? Looks like Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I just wanted to share that Experience Grand Rapids met virtually this week. And as we heard in the executive committee, uh, the, the attendance and lodging is down, which is to be expected with COVID. Just wanted to continue to encourage people to hit recreational staycations. That has been a big help. They are seeing that decline slightly with schools starting, but if anyone is considering that, or you know friends who are considering that, please continue to encourage them to stay and enjoy our events, our, our town locally. There's not a lot of events, but do attend and visit our town locally and, and stay. So I just wanted to let everyone know that, uh, it's something that Experience Grand Rapids continues to work on and focus on, and a component that's still a challenge with COVID.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Any other, Commissioner Steck?
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Just a couple of items, uh, first with respect to, uh, the Legislative Human Resource, uh, Committee. And just a reminder to all members that the deadline for applications for appointments to the various boards, authorities, and committees that were responsible for addressing and fulfilling, uh, is September thirty, so there's a few days left. I've encouraged you to continue to, uh, spread the message out there so we can maximize return on applications. Uh, then, uh, just briefly with respect to activities within the Network Quinety Legislate, uh, excuse me, uh, and Lake Shore Regional Entity. Both those entities approved their budgets, uh, recently. At the Lake Shore Regional Entity, we approved about a three hundred and eighty million dollar budget. And I will say that it's the, uh, the first budget I've seen in years that is, uh, secure and sound enough to also involve contributions to our reserve so that we're able to, uh, restabilize the entire system. So that's a very positive development. And then lastly, uh, the Crisis Center or Crisis Response Task Force continues to meet, uh, and monitor, and, uh, we're collaborating with, uh, with Adam and Wayman on the movement towards getting our crisis system up and operating. While, uh, things continue to change at the state level, which, uh, shifts some of the conversation, uh, we are still optimistic that that process is gonna go forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Steck. Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. Just briefly, the, um, uh, the joint committee between both the tech, uh, and policy committees for the Grand Valley Metro Council met for the first time, I believe, since, uh, May or June, um, this, uh, month. And beyond their, uh, typical, um, procedural amendments to, um, federal funding allocations for transportation projects, um, there was an announcement that the, uh, council had received, uh, um, a gift of, of, uh, bike lights, uh, to assist those, uh, with bike safety. And we're working to distribute those out, make those available throughout the county. Um, I personally asked that they reach out to KCCA, but I believe also that, um, they were already planning on reaching out to our, K, um, uh, to the, to KDL, as well as the ISD, as well as, uh, the Grand Rapids Public Library. Um, just so if anyone, that, larger sharing, so if, uh, anyone, uh, would like to, uh, see how they can promote getting bike lights, uh, into their constituents' hands, feel free to reach out to the Grand Valley Metro Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wooden. If you want to piggyback on Commissioner Steck's comments, uh, we are going to extend commissioner applications for commissioner boards until, um, I believe middle of, uh, up middle of November, but Pam will be sending out some sort of correspondence on that, so you don't need to feel like you're rushed to get those in. Just wanted to mention that. All right, I don't see any other hands for official reports today. Am I missing anyone? Speak up. All right, let's move on to Commissioner miscellaneous. Any miscellaneous today? Sure, there are some. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. So I guess I'll start it out. Um, I know the county staff is short, so my request here isn't immediate, uh, but something that concerns me, and I think I brought it up in meetings before. It was briefly mentioned at the executive committee meeting this morning, and, and, uh, Diane, Commissioner Jones, uh, just brought it up again, and we are always proud of our AAA bond rating, and it's effectively been used to help encourage economic development. But with those, there comes risk and attachments is that we're pledging our full faith and credit on some of these bonds. And when the money is not there to pay those, it comes out of our general fund. And the number that was kind of thrown out this morning, in the scheme of things, of a general budget of nine, one hundred ninety-two million, it may seem small, but it's a substantial amount of money. I was wondering, um, during the COVID nineteen, uh, if there's issues with the health department or the sheriffs. As a county commissioner, we get updates on that daily, and, uh, if we have concerns, we can pick up the phone and call. Uh, my, my concerns are, is what face of tourism, travel, vacations, not just looks like today, but what it looks like five, ten years down the road. I'm not as positive that, you know, we may take care of COVID, but how the public and the tourism and the traveling is gonna react may lag substantially. I think people are finding other ways to travel. Uh, I think everyone that's on one thirty-one on Friday, see all the trailers that are heading north. I don't know if people are going to big hotels as often, or if someone suggested that the VRBOs are picking up, and is that gonna take business away from the big hotels? You know, what does it look like for our, uh, conventions? Are we gonna be seeing smaller conventions where people are fearing the larger conventions? That, you know, with air travel, uh, I used to see twenty, thirty planes fly over a day. I think I saw a couple yesterday. It's only gonna take one airline that has an outbreak of COVID on it, that it's gonna put even more fears in. So I guess what I'm asking is that staff, and not so much staff, but the partners at the, uh, Convention Arena Authority, Experience Grand Rapids, the airport, give us a long-range outlook that what this looks like, because easily, the allocation we're looking at in next year's budget could easily double, triple, or quadruple if tourism and- if tourism and hospitality, which we have so much at stake in this community, not just with bringing revenues in, but there's a lot of jobs involved. There's a lot of small venues that are teetering on closing. So if we could get a, or even designate some type of work session to get all these people in to kind of give us a long range of what's happening and what we can expect as commissioners and our budgets going forward. And then lastly, if we are going to be allocating money to bail out some of the bonds, I know when the previous administrator, Delavio, was here, I think he got calls from me monthly about are those monies that we're sending, are those going to be paid back? So if we could get an update of what we paid back 10, 12 years ago to bail out those funds, if we've been fully reimbursed for that? And if we are going to start bailing out those funds again, is there a plan in the agreement that is going to pay us back? Not, not just us, but the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ponstein. And maybe we could work some of those concerns into the next budget work session. Wonder if staff could do that so we don't have to have a separate one. But we could work some of those projections, if they have them, into existing work, currently scheduled work sessions. Looks like, looks like Commissioner Melton has a comment.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. With our current count in the United States, greater than 200,000 deaths with some type of a relationship to COVID, I just would like to send out my condolences to those families and friends and all the number of people that it has affected. And quite frankly, as a person who COVID has found its way into our home, I can tell you that it does take its toll. It, sorry about that. It does affect the person who is sick with it. And although certainly we are very grateful that things here are on the mend, my 28-year-old son is certainly not the person that he was. And it will be quite a while before he is back to normal. So I would love, not like, sorry, not love. I really encourage all of us as commissioners to be the light in the community, to be the role models as Adam London has asked us to be, that we distance, that we mask, that we do the things that are prudent so that we can get out into the community, so that we can enjoy the things that our county have to offer. And just very quickly, when I go up north, I can tell you, you walk through some of those towns and people mask everywhere, outside, inside, upside down. And I don't see that here in Kent County. So there's 19 of us. I really, really encourage us to be the ones to lead the way, to be the examples and show that you can, in fact, make it through all of this with a mask on so that this does not come to any other homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Melton. And we certainly are praying and sending positive vibes for your family and your son's speedy, complete recovery. So wish you all the best in that. Commissioner Womack? Mr. Womack?
Yeah, I'd like to say to Commissioner Melton that your family are definitely in my prayers. And in my family prayer is praying for your family and just hoping your son a speedy recovery. Even though I know you said it won't be speedy, we're praying for a speedy recovery. Also like to mention to the person that was on a public comment, just to make sure that that person gets a chance to email our county clerk so she can point him in the right direction for the information he wants. I'm not sure if that comes out of the county clerk's office. But I know the county clerk office has been just working flawlessly and through the COVID-19 with all of the challenges and obstacles that they have. They've still been doing a great job with the elections. And you, you, you just name it. I just want to give a shout out to a lot of our staff, from Linda Howell to Craig Powell to Jeff Dodd, of course, our administrator, Wayman Britt, Pam and Natasha, and Mrs. Bugs, everybody that's in the office. When we look at COVID-19 and how it's put a strangle effect on businesses within Kent County, it's also done the same thing when it comes to our nonprofit organizations, a lot of our governmental agencies, our post office. And just to see the work that's getting done out of Kent County. I know people get tired of me giving the pats on the back to our staff and to our chair, Mandy Bolter. This is her first year as chair and what a challenging year it's been so far. But she hasn't missed a beat. Just shout out to all the other commissioners with the great work that you're doing. And remind everybody that even though we may say staff, commissioners, we're all a team and we have to work together, not only so we can get through this as the county, but so that our constituents and the citizens can benefit continuously from all the great services that all our organizations continue to bring to the Kent County residents. So let's definitely stay united as a team and realize that there's a lot of obstacles out here. But with everything that's been thrown at us in 2020, Kent County has delivered those services. I'll wrap it up with this. The Kent County Recovery Fund is, is so great. I was DJing at a place and somebody brought a snowman in there and wanted me to take a picture with it because they said Kent County brought us Christmas in July and August. And I'm just happy that the businesses are happy. I'm very happy that the staff and chair have put together an opportunity for all of the commissioners to get out and talk to some of the businesses that did receive some of those recovery funds. It is just tremendous. And we usually hear the complaints and issues that come to the county. But I'm glad today to be able to see some sunlight on some of the great services that have come through Kent County and through the CARES Act. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Womack, for your always positive comments and really helping us get through this in a positive ways. Thank you so much. Looks like Commissioner Wooden has a comment.
Thank you, Chair. And first, I completely understand with Commissioner Womack that in this day and age, time has become quite irrelevant. But we shouldn't discredit, take a year away from Chair Bolter's tenure. She's been chair now for two years. I wanted to take a minute and recognize a few things. Namely, first, the passing of Justice Ginsburg. Justice Ginsburg has been a hero in my family for many years. In fact, when my, my mother was admitted into Phi Beta Kappa, Justice Ginsburg was the keynote speaker at her admission. And in fact, after a few brief questions, asked her if she was going into law and she politely declined. But was a memory that has been shared in my family for, throughout my life. One thing I thought was, two things that I thought were important to think about is there is a tradition in, or is there's a term in the Jewish tradition for someone who dies on Rosh Hashanah, as Justice Ginsburg did, which is, that person is called a zatika, which means in Hebrew, a righteous person. And can't think of any more appropriate way of addressing Justice Ginsburg for her years of service in advancing the cause of justice, particularly for those who've been underwritten by and not treated equally in the eyes of the law, namely, women and people of color. And also, there is a phrase in the Talmud, "May her memory be a blessing." But for many, it has also been interpreted, "May her memory be a revolution." And the idea that her tradition of fighting for the cause of justice must live on past her in each of us. So I just wanted to recognize her, her life and her contributions to the law and to justice. I also did want to thank Commissioner Womack for his invocation and invoking Breonna Taylor's name into this space. I was at yesterday's peaceful demonstration, leaving shortly after Chief Payne joined the family and taking a knee. And, you know, she was born here in Grand Rapids. And one thing I reflect on last night as I was driving away is, had she survived, she would have turned 27 this summer. I turned 29, we're not too far apart in age. And one thing I also noticed in her biography was the fact that she truly has dedicated her life, she dedicated her life to serving others. She worked as an emergency room technician and wanted to work, serve others in health. And, you know, similarly, I feel like I've worked hard in my life and I've dedicated myself to helping others. But the key difference is I was repaid for my hard work and dedication with a position of authority and power and responsibility. And she was repaid with her life being taken from her by gunfire from police officers who acted unjustly and, in my opinion, out of the bounds of the law. And unfortunately, yesterday, those who took her life were not being held to the full extent of the law. And if that does not show, that is not a clear enough illustration of what structural racism looks like in this country. I don't know what is. And so I just hope that we, we see the significance of this moment as we work to change our practices here in Kent County, as we already have, and work to make this society a more just society so that Black Lives Matter here in Kent County and across this country. I did have one applicable question. I know that, I believe no-knock warrants are still allowed in the state of Michigan. I couldn't remember from the sheriff's report whether or not that is a practice with us. Or no-knock, if the sheriff is here today, can she answer if no-knock warrants are allowed? Are they a practice at all? And if they are, are there any plans to eliminate them as a practice?
I don't know if we're, if we're doing Q and A in miscellaneous. But you might want to, Sheriff, I don't know if you want to address that or if we can get through this and we can email those questions.
I was just going to say it's a more complicated answer than I can briefly give. I'm happy to interact with you offline about that. But they're not a common practice by any stretch.
Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate that. Any other questions or comments before? I have a couple.
Antor?
Commissioner Antor?
Thank you. Regarding Commissioner Wooden's comments that the police were responsible for Breonna Taylor's death, that was a tragic accident. I would put the blame on the person in the house that started shooting at the police. They started the gunfire. Now, in that situation, what do we expect the police to do these days? Are they supposed to just take bullets without defending themselves? No-knock warrants have been going on in this country forever. I mean, we're talking thousands and thousands of cases where we don't have any problems. You can talk about the justification of using that. There is reasons why they use no-knocks. But probably hundreds of thousands of times, nothing happens. We don't have people die. She died tragically, it was an accident. But this was all initiated by the perpetrator. They started the gunfire. And I just don't understand how we can lay the blame on the police. I mean, we've gotten so far bent out of shape in looking because people die. Let's look at the people that are dying in Chicago every single weekend. There's nobody talking about it because it doesn't fit a narrative. And I'm getting sick and tired of putting the blame on the police all the time. The police are justified 99.9% of the time when people are killed, either in custody or in the process of going into custody. I'm getting sick and tired.
This is miscellaneous, look at that.
Yes, go over everything, huh?
Excuse me. Let's go talking?
Yeah, Commissioner, sorry.
Okay, anyhow, that's my comment about that because the police have to be able to protect themselves. Otherwise, we're going to have police officers doing absolutely nothing if they're going to get thrown under the bus every time they, they do their jobs and do them well. And also, as far as the COVID, I'd like to just talk about the fact that we've had three family members here that have gotten COVID. And it is tough. But I'd also like to point out that between 40,000 and 60,000 people in a typical year die of the flu. And that's with vaccinations, okay? And in a bad year like 2018, I think we had 282,000 people die from the flu with vaccinations. So as the COVID death rate continues to spiral down, it's going to end up being about where the flu death rate is when you look at the total amount of cases. I think it's time to open up. I'd like to come back and have our regular meetings in person so we don't have to mess around on our phones anymore and on the internet. I think we can do it responsibly. If we can open up these big box stores and restaurants, we certainly could have meetings in person. I think we're just trying to, what's the kind of take by doing it this way? I, I understand why we're doing it. We're trying to be compliant with the governor's wishes. But it's time to get back to normal because otherwise, we need to start discussing what are we going to do during flu season? Are those deaths any less important? Are we going to shut everything down when people start dying from the flu? So trying to keep things real here, folks. Sorry for my attitude, but I'm getting a little sick and tired of the narrative right now. And if anybody wants to talk about Breonna Taylor's death with me and maybe that you share some information, I'd love to hear it. You can give me a call. So thank you.
Any other public comment or any other miscellaneous today? I don't see any hands raised. Anyone on the phone have additional miscellaneous? Mr. Morgan, I'm not sure if you were there, but I did attend groundbreaking at the airport last week. I didn't know if you wanted to mention that, if you're still on the phone. All right. Seeing none, I just have a couple of comments. Want to thank this commission for moving the resolution from the CARES money. We did approve an additional $5 million for businesses who have been closed in an extended fashion due to the extended executive orders. Those would include gyms, bowling alleys, theaters, convention areas. So we are hearing from the business community. They are very concerned about shutting down. This means jobs, these are people's lives. And so I really appreciate the board's approval of this additional $5 million to go toward those businesses that is specifically earmarked for those businesses who were forced to, to be closed, you know, beyond the normal shutdown. So I really want to appreciate the board for that. I also want to mention that, you know, we live in a crazy time and this is a crazy year. And it is a hyper, hyper partisan year. And I just want to acknowledge today that our board, a partisan board, came together and voted unanimously, I believe, on every single item here. And we did it because we work together. And I really want to acknowledge you all. I want to acknowledge the work of the staff. I want to acknowledge that that is special in this time because unfortunately, everything is politicized. And so I just want to, to extend my appreciation to this board and all the work that we do. And I want you all to recognize that, that unfortunately now this is unique to the political system that we are now living in. So with that, I will call on Commissioner Womack for a motion to adjourn.
Yes, I move to adjourn subject to the call of Chair Bolter to Thursday, October 8, 2020, at 8:30 a.m.
Moved by Commissioner Womack, support by Commissioner Breeby. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Adjourned. Thank you all. Have a great day.